The building.
I call the city council meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 to order. The city administrator, please call roll.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstad.
Here.
Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Councilmember Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does term. Corin, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a rule.
Open forum, opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. Anybody here to address the council on items that are not on the agenda? I see none. Move on to approval minutes for October 8th council meeting, October 25th special meeting, October 25th work session. Move.
Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please, sir.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Holstad.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Fetter.
Yeah.
Motion is carried. Schedule bid lettings, there is none. Schedule public hearings. For improvement hearing for 2023 substantial job number one for proposed street and utility improvement project on Fifth Avenue Northeast, motion to open the public hearing. Move. Move by Fetter.
Second.
Second by Riappel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Emery.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. My name is Steve Emery. I am the city's consulting city engineer. And again, like the president said, this is the improvement hearing for potential street improvement project on Fifth Avenue Northeast located between 15th Street and 20th Street. So really, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the city council, you know, to hear from the properties that are affected by the project, you know, prior to ordering, preparation of plans and specs. If this project is to move forward, this is really the first step that needs to be followed as per Minnesota statutes as part of the assessment process. A final assessment hearing would be held at a later date. And I guess, you know, you ask, why is the city looking to assess these projects? In the past, when the city has completed mill and overlay seal coat projects on our Batumanus Streets, typically those maintenance type of projects have been assessed at 100%. So what the city is looking at here, you know, being it is a concrete replacement project, it's not complete reconstruction. We're really looking at doing just panel replacement, curb and gutter replacement. And so the city felt, you know, in fairness to all the other residents that have been assessed on other maintenance projects, that, you know, they assess a portion of this project. So with that, you know, what do we know about Fifth Avenue Northeast? Currently, it's an existing concrete street, you know, was constructed in 1976, so it is currently 46 years old. The street is in need of improvements to address, you know, deteriorated, broken up concrete street panels. We do have areas where the driving lanes have settled, causing, you know, drainage issues and just poor ride quality. And then also, we have issues where we got curb and gutter settlement, heaving, you know, again, causing drainage issues. So again, those are just some of the issues that need to be addressed. So project scope, again, what we're considering this, what MINDOT considers it is an urban reconditioning project. So again, what we'd be looking at is replacement of any broken, deteriorated concrete panels, replacement of the settled concrete panels, again, to reestablish the cross slope of the road and improve drainage from the roadway. We'd be looking at replacing any curb and gutter which is broke, settled, heaved, you know. Also may, you know, depending on vicinity of that, we may have a few driveway aprons that need to be replaced. And then we'd be looking at some very minor sidewalk, maybe 88 curb ramp improvements, and then addressing any catch base and mantle castings that need to be just updated. So I've kind of included a project map, again, kind of in the lower right is 15th Street Northeast, and then kind of in the upper left is 20th Street Northeast. So that's really the entire corridor. Again, what's shown is in blue is what would be replaced as far as concrete street panels. And then I know it's a little bit hard to see, but you can kind of see the areas too where we'd be looking at curb and gutter replacement. And then the areas that are just shown in red are, again, just some minor concrete sidewalk work that would be included as part of the project. So, you know, really, a bulk of the work is curb and gutter and street panel replacement. So project funding, what we're currently proposing is as far as assessments, that it would be for 30% of the street improvement costs. The city, every four years, does receive federal sub-target funds, and so the city would be using, utilizing those funds also to pick up, you know, the additional 70% of that project cost, so. So as many of you are probably aware, you know, what are assessments? It's basically just one way that, or one method that the city uses to pay for projects directly benefiting a property. Your assessments are filed with the county and that just paid on a semi-annual basis, I guess, when you pay your county taxes. Typically, for street improvement projects like this, we've been typically assessing that over a 20-year timeframe. However, if you wish, you know, your assessments can be paid off at any point with really no, you know, no penalty assessed for paying them off early. With that, assessments are typically calculated based on a front and end footage. And so what we're showing in the map here right now is, what's shown in yellow is the properties essentially that would receive a front benefit, and then the properties that are shown in red would receive an end benefit. And basically, the end benefit is 1/3 the cost of the front benefit. So once we've calculated all of those front and end benefits, we apply that to this formula. So we're basically taking the total project cost divided by the total front footage plus 1/3 the end footage to come up with a front footage assessment rate. And then again, like I mentioned, the end benefit rate is 1/3 the front assessment rate. So with that, for these improvements, we're looking at a total project cost of about $686,469 and some change. So the total project cost to be assessed is $205,941, or 30% of that project cost. So applying that project cost, again, we come up with a front assessment rate of $81.59 and an end benefit of $27.20. So just kind of the next steps, so just based on feedback received tonight, you know, the city council will decide if they want to proceed with having plans and specifications prepared for this project. And then, like I mentioned earlier, you know, there will be a final assessment hearing that will be held. And really, when it comes to those, the city council has two options. They can hold that final assessment hearing prior to awarding the project to a contractor, or we can hold that final assessment hearing once the project has been completed and all of the final project costs are known. So with that, I guess we can just kind of open it up to any questions that you may have for me or the city council, so.
If you do have something, you can come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Yep.
Good evening. I'm Teri Hammerback. My address is 809 Central Avenue, East Grand Forks, half a block that way. I am right now the co-president of the Heritage Center in East Grand Forks. It is a nonprofit. We just, in the last, what was it, October? No, August? October, we just finished paying $27,000 in assessments for 20th Street. Again, I will repeat, we're nonprofit. We've had COVID. We have been trying to keep this place alive, and now you are going to assess us 23 or, well, by the time everything is said and done, it's going to be $25,000, $26,000 if we have to pay tax. Or, I don't know. And by the way, looking at what was up there, the map drawn, I did a specific, and of course, I know nothing, but I did drive down the street, Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street? Fifth Street.
Fifth Avenue.
Fifth Avenue.
Yep.
Drove down, there is not a dent in any of the curbs on our side. We have no driveways. We have only a curb. There is nothing wrong with our side of the street. We don't use that side. That's the east end of the Heritage Village, and you're going to charge us $23,000, $24,000. Yes, I realize it's being assessed over however many years, but we, please, do the other side of the road if you want. Put in new sidewalks for the apartment complex, but you do, I'm not sure where we're going to come up with this money. Little by little, you know, we're trying to make things work out there. Looking at what uses the road most often are the farm trucks, and of course, the people that are going to the apartments, the trailer court, all new drive, all new roads are there. I'm just saying, if you leave our side of the road alone, and we'll be fine. If you want to patch the other side of the road, the east side of Fifth, that would be wonderful, but please don't touch ours. The curbs are good. Everything is fine on that side. I just drove there and looked at it, but I don't know if you ever considered that, but like I said, just getting done paying $27,000, $28,000, and now we're going to be assessed $24,000? I realize we need new roads. I'm not going to stand in the way of having East Grand Forks have decent roads. However, please consider who you are assessing. We are nonprofit, and we are trying to keep our heritage alive. Thank you. Did I cover it? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have anything for the public hearing?
I kind of leaned over and asked around just about assessing nonprofit organizations. So that's, you know, maybe a question we just have to look into. And again, I agree with you, when you look at, you know, that side of the street, you know, when you look at kind of the map, you're correct, there isn't a lot of replacement on that side of the street, but, you know, typically, we haven't, from an assessment process, I guess we haven't, you know, looked at one side of the street versus the other. I mean, we look at it as kind of a complete project, and, you know, all the properties on either side of that street really benefit, so, you know, that's, I guess, how we approach this one.
Thank you. Steve, looking at the map, it looks from, like, to me, I'm just, like I said, it's hard to read exactly, but is the, it's basically four lanes, right? There's two on the east and two on the west. So it looks to me like from Venus to 20th, practically, the entire center panel is being replaced.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. You're right, Mr. Demers, there is that one stretch just south of 20th. That would include the southbound, I'd call it a driving lane there, because those driving lanes there have settled, so we need to replace them, you know, not only to replace some broken concrete panels, but to reestablish that crown. So yeah, I guess you are right. There is a stretcher that would be the west, what I'd call the westerly half. Yes.
And I, I mean, just on the nonprofit thing, I know in the past, we've, it doesn't matter if you're church or nonprofit or whatever, it seems like we've assessed whomever. I understand, you know, the ability to raise funds or whatever is different, but it doesn't, from the city's perspective, although we want to promote certain things or whatever, I don't think we, I don't think we're able to or nor should we start picking and choosing along projects, how we assess. I guess this was proposed as a need primarily. I don't see why we shouldn't do it. Like I said, it's been 50 years, which is about the time for a street replacement, so for that to happen, you know, we're not even doing all of it. I mean, fortunately, I mean, this is a, it's already a cost savings. I mean, you're, they're only getting hit for 30% of what the actual rate would be. It's a tough thing because they're large landowners, but I don't know, I don't know what the remedy is. I don't think there's one unless you just don't do the entire project, but I don't think that's really in our interest, because then what, then what happens is that that center driveline keeps failing, deteriorating, which leads to the parking lane going bad, and then you end up having to replace that whole thing and the thing, and in 15 years, you have a $70,000 bill. So I don't, I mean, it's a, I understand it's tough because it's a large piece of property, but I don't know.
Mayor.
This is Hammerback. I had some things I wanted to say, but I was afraid it might get detention, so I kept them to myself. The beauty of you being here, I think, and telling the story of the Heritage Center that we all believe in, that we all support, that we all really enjoy, is to say, this puts you guys between a rock and a hard place financially, once again, and if there's anyone in the community that can step up, it's going to be a little over $1,000 a year for 20 years that additional that you're going to need in your budget to cover this, let's say even $1,500 a year. That's a few people just stepping up and being generous to the Heritage Foundation, and we can cover this. So, you know, it kind of looks like it's going to go forward, but I do ask our community to step up and take a look at an organization like this and give it all the support that you can to get through something like this. I guess is how I would look at it. I do appreciate you being here, and if there was something we could do legally, you know, procedurally, to still go through with this and do it right, and not have this assessment fall on you, you know we would do it. Legally and in other ways, we're kind of bound by our own ordinance and street replacement policy and whatnot, so let's see if we can step up and carry our organization through this.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been very boisterous on getting this Fifth fixed because it doesn't need it. But on the other side, I will tell you that I am the other co-president of the Heritage Foundation, and I'll put that right out front right now. But it's my understanding, why are we assessing just this part of the repairs we're doing? We're doing two other repairs, and we're not assessing those properties. You talk about being fair and equal, that's not fair and equal. We're going to do two other jobs, and they're not going to be assessed at all, and now all of a sudden, we are. At the meeting when we voted, we voted two of them to not assess, and this one here to be assessed. So in my checking around and what I'm finding out is typically, it's not, it's not a normal city policy to assess properties that are just having a street fixed. They assess properties when a street is reconstructed or totally redone. So are we going against, are we actually sticking to our policy, or are we doing something different here? Because that's, that's the way I'm understanding it.
Yeah. I guess, again, if, you know, like I said early on, if you look at this as really a maintenance type of project, because that's what we're trying to do, is just do some repairs right now to increase the longevity of the entire roadway. It's no different than, again, our Batumanus Streets where we're doing seal coats, mill and overlays every, you know, 10 to 15 years, and those type of projects, we have assessed, and we've assessed actually at 100% of the project cost, so.
I think if I could interject to your question, what differentiates this from those other two areas? You know, if we do a spot repair, if we do a panel here, a panel there, then we've been able to pick that up through other funds. Those other two areas, we all decided they were of a small enough area and heavy in the intersection. You know, how do you distribute the cost if it's mostly in the intersection? So spot repairs, heavy in the intersection, we tend to cover through other sources of funds other than a special assessment. And so we decided those other two fit more in the spot repair, where this was more of a reconstruction project.
So then maybe we should take this street here, as bad as I want to fix, maybe we should make this just like 20th Street and just leave it alone, because we don't want to have, we don't want to pay. And that's what 20th Street done. They don't want to pay, so we're just going to leave it alone. So maybe we want to do that here, too.
The beauty of this one is it's just 30%. That's the beauty of it. It's a, it's a kind of a bargain.
There's nothing that's a bargain against the Heritage, I'm telling you, because we're struggling just to stay alive there. And I don't want to sit here and be on both sides, but I know what the Heritage is going through, and I know what it's, how hard, you know, we work up there to keep that thing open, and so I guess I'm voting no on assessing it.
I'm just going to ask, do you ever look at who uses that road besides, I mean, nobody from, very few, I should say. The only time I use that road is when I'm at the Heritage, is when I have to go to Hugo's, and I will go that back road to Hugo's. Who uses the road? Isn't it, I mean, wasn't that road, as an East Grand Forks resident, as a person who lives on Central Avenue, whose brother was killed by a beet truck on Central Avenue, I thought for sure Fifth Avenue, Fifth Avenue?
Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, thank you, on Street Avenue, whatever. I thought that was put in so the beet trucks, the farm trucks could use that road, so it's not going straight down a definite residential area who has daycares there. And if, if the road is being wrecked, and I don't mean wrecked, but you know, if it's being used and it's starting to fall apart, if it's because the farmers are using that road, which is wonderful, it's a real clear cut across for them to the beet plant, why aren't they being assessed?
That's why you're only getting assessed 30% versus 70, the full 100.
Yeah, but our side of the road is not, is not wrecked. Go look at it, our side, leave our side of the road alone.
I drive it. I live on, I live over there. I drive it.
Oh, good. Then, so then you know, then you know that our side, the west side of that road is not, no, it's not.
It's the parking lane that's not.
No, I've driven down there. It was last year where they had that big hole that was on the east side, that was like two years of driving through, and as far, as far as I'm concerned, our side, our curbs, the gutters, everything is just fine. And that's all right. I mean, but just look at who uses the road mostly, and then go with that. I mean, I don't, you know, of course, I'm just speaking from somebody who looks and sees what's going on as far as that road, it's trucks. And yes, I realize the people that live in the apartments and the trailer court, and mostly the people that live in the trailer court come from the other way, come on 17th. They don't even go down that way. So maybe you should do a study as to who uses the road the most and go from there. It makes sense to me. It makes common sense to me. For those who are using the road should be the ones that are assessed. There are no driveways, no parking, no whatever for the Heritage on that road. We're either in our own parking lots or we're on 20th, and we have been assessed for 20th, let me tell you. So anyway, I mean, I'm just saying, maybe there's another way to go about this, maybe do a study as to who is using that road. You know, common sense tells me that's what you should do. But thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Helms.
As she said, we just finished paying off the assessment on 20th, and if you drive down 20th, that's bad, too. It's horrible. There's a low spot there, the culverts, the street manholes are all falling in, and we just paid it off, and now we're going to end up probably paying that street again, too, here pretty quick. So if you drive up there and look at 20th, it just, it's not very good shape either. So I don't know if there's any way possible that the Heritage Foundation would be able to afford to pay for both streets, because it's going to have to be done, too.
Mr. Riappel, is everything bad?
No, I'll pass.
Okay.
Just wanted to go back to Mr. Riappel, and he pointed out that because it's a state aid street, we find other sources of funds for 70% of the reconstruction, meaning so everything else. We know it's a collector. We know it's agriculture. We know it's all these other things, and that's where the 70% coverage comes in. The local 30, we know it's not your front of your business, of your, of your organization. And finally, we don't have any taxing authority over people living outside the city limits. So if it was agriculture, we don't have any way to tax them. We have no taxing authority to the farmers. So, but just please know that's why we have designated it a state aid street, so anything done to it will be covered 70% outside of the adjacent properties, and then 30 coming back.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm or deny, I guess, any language in our policy or our statutes regarding nonprofits in our special assessment policy.
There's nothing in the policy, and there's, and according to the special assessment statutes, nonprofits can be assessed along with railroads or churches or anybody else, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. So is this a front benefit or is it an end benefit?
Heritage Days would get, receive an end benefit.
Is it an end benefit? So it's a, it's 30% of 30%?
Right.
Okay.
You know, you said the, you know, the bad part, it's just a big property, and that's, you know, why you still get a pretty significant assessment.
I, you know, I think the mayor has put it well, is, you know, we know what the function of that street is, road. It's why it's classified what it is. It's why we've identified it for state aid dollars, which it's why we, by policy, reduced the burden on those property owners. My only thought, might get myself into trouble, but if, but that's never shite. What I would maybe suggest is if you have a hunch about what's causing that, being a nonprofit, maybe you follow those trucks and see if you can make up some of that difference with where they head. I guess that would be my recommendation. I don't think the city has the ability, less not doing the project, I don't think we have any ability to do this without assessing this, so.
Anybody else have anything for the public hearing? Mr. Johnson.
Teri, my heart goes out for you. I remember your, your family went through quite an ordeal on that, but also, that's why that Fifth is wanting to get done, is so no other child will get hit by a semi-cement truck, potato beet truck. That's why we have Fifth, okay? So nobody else has to go through that.
Anybody else have anything for the public hearing? Do I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move.
By Riappel?
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now closed. Consent agenda, there is none. Move on to acknowledge of receipt of reports of officers, boards, and commissions, regular meeting minutes with Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for October 5th, 2022, and the city financial statements as of September 30th, 2022. Communication, there is none. Old business, there is none. We'll move on to new business. Number seven, consider adopting resolution 22-11-77, ordering improvement and Number seven, consider adopting resolution 22-11-77, ordering improvement and preparation of plans and specifications for the 2023 assessment job number one for street and utility improvements for on Fifth Avenue Northeast.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
No.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number eight, consider adopting resolution 22-11-78, rejecting the bid for the 2022 city project number six for pedestrian improvements at Bigland Road.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Better. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number nine, consider adopting resolution 22-11-79, accepting a grant from the COPS office totaling $50,398.30 for the purchase of the Trinian simulator for Vietertra, Vitra, whatever, for the police department. Move. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 11, consider approving exempt gambling permit application for Knights of Columbus 5341 to hold a raffle on May 1st, 2023 at Sacred Heart Church located at 203rd Street Northwest in East Grand Forks, and waive the 30-day waiting period.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 11, consider approving exempt gambling permit application for Knights of Columbus 5341 to hold a raffle on May 1st, 2023 at Sacred Heart Church located at 203rd Street Northwest in East Grand Forks, and waive the 30-day waiting period.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, consider authorizing the city administrator Kirk treasurer to issue payment and recommend bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, consider authorizing the city administrator Kirk treasurer to issue payment and recommend bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Elms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
Sorry, I missed Halloween at the Heritage Center. When is your Christmas gathering, once again?
December 2nd.
December 2nd.
The 3rd is the first Saturday in December.
December 3rd. Heritage Christmas.
We'll have membership envelopes ready for you guys, and you can join the Heritage Center, which would be helpful if we're going to have to pay our taxes.
Bring your donations.
Yes, and bring your donations.
Yeah, they'll take them. Number two, congratulations to everybody on a safe and abundant harvest. Looks like we got in safely, and glad to hear that. Now come get your beets out of our streets. No, just kidding. We got this. Number three, again, to anyone heading out into the bush for the deer hunt, again, have some fun and be safe, good productive harvest, and finally, make sure to get out and vote. It's a big deal. It's our chance to have our voice heard. You can't give me this time, because I'm not up for election, but really, get out and vote. It's very, very important. Think of it as your civic duty and a way to really shape our government how you want it. Thanks.
Mr. Better?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Elms?
Thank you. Couple things. So this approval tonight is just to go ahead and get the specs and plans and everything right, and then it's got to, it's still got to have another hearing on the assessment?
Yeah, once we receive bids, then you guys will decide if you award it before the assess, or if you award it before the assessment hearing, or if we complete the project and then hold the assessment hearing. So once we receive bids, you, the council, kind of decide what the next step is.
Okay, thank you. And the only other thing I have is good luck to all the candidates who are running for election, so that's it.
Riappel?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing today.
Mr. Larson?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Goldstead?
Nothing except for, could I see Mayor Gander after just a moment?
Oh, you intro.
Again.
Mr. Emery?
I have nothing else.
I can't.
Anything from the department that's tonight? Entertained a motion adjourned.
Move.
By Johnson.[1788.76]